Good evening. I would like to call this meeting of the Standing Committee on Rules and Procedures back to order. My name is Kevin O'Reilly. I'm the MLA for Yellknife and Chair of the Committee. Today's meeting is being livestreamed on the Assembly's social media channels. To respect social distancing requirements, other members and our witnesses will be attending by video conference. I'd like to remind all members and witnesses that all comments, questions, and remarks will need to be directed to myself as Chair. Both members and witnesses will need to wait to be recognized by the Chair before speaking. This meeting is the Committee's fourth public hearing in its public review of the report of the Chief Electoral Officer on the Administration of the 2019 General Election. This will be likely the Committee's final public hearing. However, members of the public are able to make written submissions, and Committee will be pleased to accept them until 5:00 PM on Friday, September 25. Committee looks forward to hearing concerns and comments from the public as we continue our work. You know, any ideas, suggestions on how we can improve the next territorial election are certainly welcome. Before we invite any witnesses, I'd like to ask members of the Committee to introduce themselves for the record. And perhaps we'll start with Mr. Jacobson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Jackie Jacobson, MLA, Nunavut.
Good evening. Steve Norton, MLA, Tenoda, Alberta.
Rocky Simpson, MLA, Hay River South.
Shane Thompson, MLA, Manhangu.
Thank you, Committee. We're also joined in the room by our Clerk, Mr. Ball. Thank you. Our researcher, Mr. Dunbar, and our Clerk intern, Mr. Thomas. So, as I understand it, we have two witnesses this evening on our list. We're going to start with MLA Julie Green, and then we will hear from David Wasselsio next. So, Ms. Green, please proceed.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Julie Green. I'm the MLA for Yellowknife Centre. This is my second term. In the last term, I chaired the Special Committee to Increase the Representation of Women in the Legislative Assembly. The Committee delivered its final report on June 4, 2019, and the final report contained three recommendations, which came from extensive consultation in 10 of the 33 communities in the Northwest Territories. The recommendation that I want to raise with you tonight is the recommendation to reimburse candidates for a portion of their election expenses. Across Canada, all provinces except Alberta and B.C. have some kind of election rebate, and it's also available for federal elections. The premise is to enable candidates to compete financially for seats without finances being a significant barrier to their participation. We're in a unique position here because this is not a party jurisdiction, and much of the rebate itself is tied to party performance. But the point is the same in all jurisdictions, is the candidates have to make an effort to campaign at their advance, and that the reimbursement is tied to the percentage of the vote that they earn. So, the range across the country is up to 15% of the vote needs to be earned in Saskatchewan in order to qualify for the rebate. And the size of the reimbursement, that is, how much of the expenses are refunded, also varies. With Saskatchewan, again, on the high end, that's 60%, offer a 60% rebate on election spending. So, what we heard on that committee when we were touring the NWT is that some people who might consider becoming candidates find funding in election campaign a barrier, even with our low election expense threshold at $30,000. We also heard that that was especially true for women, who feel they have less access to political donations, and they are not generally confident fundraisers. The Committee heard that women believe financial assistance would help them decide to run. And just as a reminder, this was before the historic election of 2019, so this was a live issue, how to get women to run in the first place. The Research Department at the Legislative Assembly, who did research for our Committee, looked at historic election results, and these results showed that women would benefit from a rebate, because historically, they'd spent more money out of their own pockets than male candidates had. So, the Committee looked at a rebate scheme and decided, first of all, that it would apply to all candidates, not only to women. The Committee then set parameters about how to calculate the rebate. So, first, any money donated to the campaign is not eligible for a rebate, with the exception of money contributed by the candidate himself or herself. So, just to clarify at this point, if you did a lot of fundraising and your campaign ended up with a zero balance or a surplus, you would not be eligible for any kind of a rebate. And that was the case, for example, with me in the last election, I had a surplus. Secondly, only money spent by the candidate and not covered by donations is eligible for a rebate. So, the rebate is calculated on the difference between what the candidate spent and what the candidate got in donations. The money... Okay, I misspoke there. Only money spent by the candidate and not covered by donations is eligible for a rebate. Sorry. Second, the spending would be eligible for up to 50% reimbursement, to a maximum of $3,000. This is what the previous Committee decided. And third, the Committee decided that the threshold for qualifying for reimbursement was to earn 5% of the vote. So, with that information in hand, the Special Committee to Increase the Representation of Women in the Legislative Assembly recommended that the Legislative Assembly create an election rebate for candidates who receive at least 5% of the votes cast in his or her electoral district in the NWT, reimbursing 50% of eligible personal election expenditures up to a maximum of $3,000. The cost of government, if this rebate scheme had been in place for the 2019 election, would have been $50,071. Four candidates would have received the maximum $3,000 rebate had it been in place. Ten candidates would not have qualified for a rebate because their fundraising obstructed their spending. Two candidates would not have qualified because they did not reach the 5% of the vote threshold. The Committee's report also contains analysis of what the rebate would have looked like in 2007, 2011, and 2015. On average, the cost is about $60,000 for each of these elections. And it's worth noting that women candidates would generally have been eligible for a greater rebate than men candidates in each of those elections. The detailed analysis of the 2007 to 2011 and 2015 elections are on page 27 of the final report of the Standing Committee on Increasing the Representation of Women, and that's a table document available on the Legislative Assembly website. There are a few other considerations that Committee might want to think about in creating an election rebate scheme. First, should candidates who don't file their election spending reports on time be eligible for a rebate? In the last election, seven candidates didn't file on time. If they were excluded from the rebate scheme that I just described, the total cost would have gone down to $42,000. Another consideration is whether a candidate who is acclaimed should be eligible for a rebate. In the last election, one of the three acclaimed candidates went running on a campaign. And finally, should non-monetary contributions by a candidate be eligible for a rebate? And what I have in mind here is the monetary value that is assigned to things like reused election signs, or gifts and kind, that kind of thing. So, not money, but everything else. So, I just want to say that there is a lot to digest here, and I can send you the jurisdictional scan information and the election spending and rebate information for the last four elections for your consideration. What I want to leave you with is a request for you to do your own investigation of an election rebate scheme. It would benefit our consensus-style government by making it feasible for more people, both men and women, to become candidates. People with a desire to serve their communities in this territory would not be at a financial disadvantage. That's my presentation, and I'm welcoming questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Green. Maybe I could just start with, it sounded like you were probably reading from some notes, and that you have some additional information that you could provide to Committee? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. I can send you my bullet point notes and the documents I referenced, the costs of different rebate schemes based on NWT results, and the jurisdictional scan of what's provided in other parts of Canada.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I think we would appreciate receiving that information, and of course, you can send it to our Clerk, and he'll make sure that we get it. I'd like to open up the floor, though, to Committee members, if you have any questions of Ms. Green on this idea of a rebate system. Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Green, for your presentation. I guess my first question, when you talk about 5%, how did that number come up out of it? So, we'll just say there's 100 people that voted, and one individual got 5%. How did you guys come up with that number? Was it something that was based on studies somewhere? I guess that'd be my first question. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Mr. Thompson. Ms. Green?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a little bit of difficulty listening, hearing Mr. Thompson, but I understood how he wanted to know how the Committee came up with 5% of the vote. And so, what we found through our jurisdictional scan was that 5% was the minimum in Prince Edward Island, which was the lowest in Canada. So, the idea was that people needed to make some effort, but they didn't have to earn as many votes as the matter. So, the idea was to make it maximally accessible to candidates, so to try and include as many people as possible, so the threshold was set low at 5%.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Green. Mr. Thompson, anything further?
Yeah, thanks. Appreciate that answer. I guess my question is, with this number, are we trying to get more people to run? Or are we trying... Like, I'm trying to understand why we just say 5% to get people out there, and you want, as you've been very successful, you know, it's work to do it. So, I'm just trying to understand, you know, P.I. says 5%, but why not 10%? Like, I mean, I'm just trying to understand the logistics of it, because, I mean, to me, if you want to run, you're gonna have to work hard to get out there and knock on people's doors. So, I'm just trying to have a better understanding what this 5% has come from. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Mr. Thompson. Ms. Green?
Yeah, thank you. So, there's no magic to the 5%. We chose 5% because it would exclude as few people as possible from the rebate scheme. Obviously, if you get less than 5% of the vote, you haven't mounted much of the campaign, and so you're not going to be eligible for much of a rebate. So, the idea was to try and make it accessible to as many people as possible. But the number could be any number. It could be 10%. It could be 25%. It depends on how many people you want to access, and how much money you have to give away in rebates. So, the numbers are very flexible, and they're different all across Canada.
Thanks, Ms. Green. I think Mr. Thompson has one more question. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I'm being respectful of the time. Probably have more, but I will have the conversations a little bit later on, and maybe my colleagues will have asked questions I'm looking at. So, how did the number of $3,000 come up? When you're looking at a maximum of $3,000? I mean, I just look at some of the writings. Here in Yellknife, it's very expensive to run. I mean, I've seen, you know, some of the, in the reports, some of it, you know, $15,000, $20,000, $25,000 to actually run. Some of the other communities' writings may not be, but I guess I'm trying to understand where $3,000 came from, because depending on writing, I look at MLA Jacobson's, his writing, like, I mean, just to, yeah, like, just get a flight to Polatuck is horrendous, right? You know, so I'm just looking at that number, trying to understand how $3,000 came about. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Thompson. Ms. Green?
Yeah, thank you for that question. So, the key number here is 50% of the election expenses. So, it would be 50% if you're in Yellknife Centre. It would be 50% if you were in Nunavut. It would be 50% if you were in Hay River South. And we decided, that Committee decided, to cap the rebate at $3,000 to keep the costs under control. And we also saw that in the last election, for example, there were only a few people who would have been eligible for the total $3,000. And they weren't all in Yellknife by any means. In fact, Mr. Norton was one of the candidates who would have been eligible for the maximum rebate. So, we wanted to reflect on what people actually spent, whether that was a lot or a little, and then put a cap on it so that the costs would not be unpredictable, that there would be a way to budget for this, and it would be a predictable amount.
Thanks, Mr. Thompson. If you have some more questions, we can come back to you, but I'm going to turn to Mr. Jacobson next. Please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Green, just in regards to, is there any other jurisdictions in the Commonwealth do this, and the idea of giving funds back to the candidates that are unsuccessful? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Mr. Jacobson. Ms. Green, please go ahead. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you for the question, Mr. Jacobson. I did not see a jurisdictional scan of the entire Commonwealth. I only saw a scan of the country. And in the country, eight out of 10 provinces offer a rebate scheme that's based on earning of the popular, earning, vote-earning. And it doesn't matter if you were a successful vote-earner or not. It was about the percentage of votes that you earned. And Canada, for the federal elections, also has a scheme in place that rebates money to candidates. So, the places that don't have a scheme like this are the Three Territories, Alberta and B.C.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Green. Mr. Jacobson, no, nothing further?
Nothing further. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Green.
Thanks, Mr. Jacobson. Mr. Norton, you're next.
Mr. Chair, and thank you again for that presentation, Emily Green. Yeah, I guess I didn't realize I was eligible for that, you made me tell now, just to mention it, but just listening to some of the comments and questions, colleagues from the Henday and the York, but that's fine. One thing I did have a question, is what I found, even through my, through last year's experience, was travel. I think that was not something that wasn't mentioned too much. What did you find through your consultations with setup with travel? Because I know, like, myself and my colleague from the Henday and the York, we have some, we have a lot of communities, it's very expensive. I think that was, I find that was my basic expense, was just getting out to the communities. So, is that what you found during your consultations?
Thanks, Mr. Norton. Ms. Green, please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. In the, our staff looked at previous candidate election expense returns, and there's a clear division between candidates who have small communities far from Yellknife, and what they spend on travel, and what someone like me, who lives in the middle of Yellknife, spends. So, what I found, generally speaking, was that the people who lived further from Yellknife spent the most on travel, and the people who lived in Yellknife spent the most on advertising and signs. So, there's really a very different style of campaigning in the small communities, where visiting people and visiting the heads of families and so on is a much more viable way of earning votes than for someone like me, who knows maybe 20% of my neighbors. I need to go and knock on every door and make sure I've got signs everywhere so that they know I'm in the competition. So, there is really a difference in what people spend money on.
Okay. Thanks, Ms. Green. Mr. Norton, anything further?
Yeah, I'm just kind of maybe just thinking of, could you, you think this could probably evolve to something more, like, say, even looking at, I mean, something separate, like, even a travel rebate? Do you think that's something we could probably, as I said?
Thanks, Mr. Norton. Ms. Green?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that question very well. Could you please repeat it, Mr. Norton?
Thanks, Ms. Green. Mr. Norton, maybe we'll just get you to pull the microphone over a little bit closer, and then, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, yeah. My apologies, I was speaking a little faster. I'll speak a little bit slower. Do you think, through all this, do you think there'd be any value of actually getting some sort of travel rebate for some of the smaller writings?
Yes, I do see a value in that. I see a value in creating a reimbursement scheme that has a set of potential expenses that can be reimbursed for, and that should include travel, as well as election signs and advertising, so that the scheme meets people where they're at in terms of their spending. So, if you're spending most of your budget on travel, you would be eligible for reimbursement for travel, and if you're spending most of your money on signs, you'd be eligible for reimbursement on signs within the parameters that are set out by the rebate scheme. But it should meet candidates where they're at in order to be effective.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Ms. Green. Any other questions from Committee members? Mr. Simpson, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the presentation, Ms. Green. I guess, listening to the presentation and what the colleagues have to say, and thinking about it, I can see the merit in this, especially in, I guess, for Yellknife, but for the smaller communities as well, where, you know, a lot of the people may not have access to the resources required to mount a campaign, and especially with travel. So, it's something I think that we should really look at and consider implementing. It's, because I guess when I look around, when I look around at all the MLAs right now, you know, we're talking about this, we're talking about it now, and maybe it was talked about in the past, but, you know, I never really thought about reimbursement for anything, to tell you the truth. But at the same time, I can, you know, I can, I look out in the communities, and even in Hay River, there's people that might want to run, and it is costly to do it. And if you're one that can't, you know, you don't feel comfortable going out and requesting assistance and donations from others, it could be really difficult. So, I guess it has merit, and it's something that, you know, that we should consider, and yeah, it's, I'm pleased that you bring this forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Mr. Simpson. I'm not sure there was a question there, but that's okay. Ms. Green, did you want to respond in any way?
Yeah, I do, and I appreciate that comment, Mr. Simpson. What I want to recognize is that the fundraising opportunities in many writings in the Northwest Territories are very limited, because there is a very small business base, and there are not a lot of wealthy people who can make political donations. So, I see the rebate scheme being especially useful in that context, where fundraising is limited by the size of the community and the overall wealth of the community. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Green. Any other questions from Committee members? I've got one. In any of the other jurisdictions that you looked at, was there any, it looks like it's based on reimbursement after, you know, somebody has to go out and expend the funds and then seek reimbursement afterwards? Was there any of the jurisdictions that offered, I don't know, dare I say, money upfront somehow to assist particularly, say, with travel expenses or extraordinary expenses, so that someone wouldn't have to be out of pocket? I'm just kind of curious myself. Thanks.
Yeah, that's a good question. I don't think any of the jurisdictions do offer money upfront, and the Committee did have a conversation about that, recognizing that some people wouldn't run if they didn't have cash on hand right away, that they couldn't pay for those expenses out of pocket and then wait for reimbursement. And the Committee came to the conclusion that it would be very difficult to recoup that money from someone who was a successful candidate, unsuccessful candidate, once the money was spent. We couldn't see a way in which we could guarantee some kind of performance for the money that was spent, so that's why we didn't go that way. But we did acknowledge that some people needed the money for startup, and that having money upfront would be useful, but we couldn't figure out how you could be assured of collecting it on the other end.
Okay. No, that's fair enough. Thanks very much. I've got, Mr. Jacobson, again, you've got another question? Please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. No, just in regards to Julie, when you look at the cost and the travel rebates, the whole, like, where we're from, you know, we have to travel into the communities for, if you had a travel rebate, hotels, food, your, the hall, meeting of the hall, when you're, you know, your meet and greet and stuff like that, your fees, your truck rentals, your signs, when you're getting them out of Yellknife, being shipped up north, this and that alone is probably about, you know, $500 or $600. I guess, going forward, thinking about it, I mean, this is, this would help a lot of people in regards to make that decision. Have you thought about, other than just the cost for going forward, getting, for the vote side, could we add this into the whole scheme of things, I guess, as a, by riding? I guess when you look at it, you know, you have your Yellowknife, and then you have North and South, different costings and stuff like that, because a charter up in the Delta is like about $20,000 for hitting two communities. So it's really tough on, on individuals to flip that bill. And, you know, your saving, your savings goes into your, your election. And like you said, not too many people will get this rebate if they don't get those, that 5% of that vote. So something's got to be, something's got to give here in regards to trying to help out. That's a really good idea. I really thank you for bringing it forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Mr. Jacobson. Ms. Green, any thoughts about some of the different costings according to the writings? Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that comment, Mr. Jacobson. What I've seen in historic and in analysis of historic returns is that the most money is spent in Yellowknife. There isn't as much money spent in the small communities. So I don't know if you need a differentiation between the different regions of the NWT. I think what's really important is that the list of expenses that are eligible to be rebated needs to include all the things that you mentioned, travel, feasts, hall rental, truck rental, everything that you're spending money on, that all needs to be included in the eligible expenses for rebate. So that no matter where you're campaigning, your, your spending is included in the list of eligible expenses.
Thanks, Ms. Green. Any other questions from committee members? No? Okay, thank you very much. I think you've given us some interesting ideas to ponder and think over. So I want to thank you very much for your participation this evening. And of course, you'll be sending some further information to the clerk. But thanks again for presenting your ideas with us this evening.
Yes, thank you very much. That's for now.
Okay, thanks very much, Emily Green. So our next presenter, we're just waiting to get... He's on? Oh, great, okay. Thanks very much, Mr. Wassilsey, for joining us. You're pretty small on the screen that I can see from the front of the room. But as I understand, I think you have two presentations that you'd like to give us this evening. One from Open NWT and one for yourself as an individual. Do you have a preference in terms of the order that you'd like to do it in this evening?
Sure, Mr. Chair. I'd like to speak to Open NWT first.
Okay, great. Yeah, now you are much bigger on my screen, so I can see your face. But yeah, please go ahead, and maybe you can just explain a little bit about Open NWT as well, if you don't mind. But please go ahead. The floor is yours.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I can almost see myself on the TV behind you, and it's a little terrifying, though. Thanks for, thanks for having this meeting, and thanks for inviting the public to be able to speak to the committee about this. I mean, the elections review is really important. And it really happens at the beginning of the term, but it's a really important time to actually look at what happened in the last few years and what's happening, kind of happened in the next election. So this first presentation is on behalf of Open NWT. And Open NWT is a nonprofit organization that works to make the Northwest Territories government more open and transparent and accountable. For a number of years, Open NWT's run a number of websites. There are a few of you are familiar with them. One of them is a sort of an open assembly tool that shows answered and makes it searchable, unless the public get alerts. It shows election data going back, actually to '75. We have, you know, archives of cabinet data going back to the original, the beginnings of cabinet in the 90s. We run a procurement information site, which shows a whole bunch of history of government procurements and contracting that you can't find anywhere else. But the idea is that Open NWT exists to provide better access to information. And so it was with that that we came up with a number of recommendations around this election. There's sort of two parts to them. The first part is just about transparency and the operation of the election. And the second part is about actual sort of electoral policy reform. So the first, the first few recommendations are simply that this committee and the ledge should mandate that Elections NWT follows the principles of open government and becomes covered by the Access to Information Act. Related to that, it's that actual standards are put in place for information published about elections. So right now, what happens after the election is you see the official reports, the official results get reported, and then there's the election report that gets published. Those change every time. So there's, there's a bit of consistency, but some of the information that gets published depends on what the CEO of the, the chief electoral officer of the election happens to want to publish. So a few years ago, the CEO at the time didn't publish the number of spoiled ballots on a per-poll basis. Every other election they have. These sorts of things are all decisions just left to the CEO of the day and not detailed anywhere. So the recommendation is that the committee has some amendments made to the legislation to say specifically what information about elections will be published, what polls, the breakdown, that sort of thing. Pre-division, there was a lot of information published about, they actually broke down advanced polls by community. That sucked in the last few elections, that sort of thing. And just setting a standard for what information is published, and also that that same information is accessible. So right now, if you look at the, the election report that we're reviewing today, there are many, many tables and graphs and charts and all kinds of things. But those are very difficult for anyone to actually be able to analyze or take out of that report. In some cases, you can't actually find the numbers behind the graphs. So the recommendation is that committee also mandates Elections NWT to publish that information openly in a sort of a machine readable format, which really just means a spreadsheet. And that way, the public would actually have access to the same sort of data that Elections NWT is using to analyze the election. Having to do all of that manually, take it out of the report, is frankly more work than most people are ever going to put into it. Same thing with the election results. They're very nice and pretty in the report, but it can be really hard if you wanted to build, you know, if you wanted to get some information on what happened for like turnout or some of those things, you actually have to go through and pull all that information out manually. And that's a real pain, and we think that actually makes it more difficult for people to understand our elections. The last one about a recommendation around election operation is that Elections NWT be mandated to follow the GNWT practice of advertising public procurements and disclosing awarded contracts. This isn't one we've had to ever make in the past, but seemingly in this last election, and looking at the report and reading about the different contracts with various companies that Elections NWT had, very, very, very few of those were ever really ever publicly competed. In fact, only one of them for the Electorhood program was an open competition. Everything else that was contracted was sole sourced. And the subsequent contracts were never disclosed in any GNWT contract disclosure at any point over the last four years. This is simply an issue from a public accountability standpoint. None of that information is available. I'm sure there were reasons for sole sourcing some of that information, perhaps not. But then, none of those have ever actually been disclosed, and the only mention of some of them even existing was in that election report. So that should change, and that should be mandated that that has to happen. And that's just about fair procurement and making sure what happens in Elections NWT is open and transparent. So those are the sort of four key overview recommendations around open information. Two others on campaign finance, rules and regulations. One of them, Emily Green just spoke about fairly at length, so I won't get into too much, but implementing a reimbursement program for campaign expenses. That's been something of an issue for Open NWT as well over the past few election cycles for many of the reasons that you already heard tonight. So rather than rehash that, I will just add a few things. The average cost of the last three elections, the average campaign cost was only $7,500. Give or take a couple hundred dollars, but that was the average. It was a little higher in 2007, about $9,000, but that's about it. There, you know, there's quite a bit gap between when people spend a lot of money, but the average isn't that high. So a reimbursement of even a moderate number could make a big difference to get people running, and it can still have a huge impact on effective campaigns. The average cost to run a successful campaign in the territory is floated between $10,000 and $12,000. So it's nowhere near the limit. It's still quite low. And even the $3,000 reimbursement that was recommended would still make an impact, it would have difference. Originally, I don't, we had previously suggested a rebate of $5,000. But frankly, it's, it's just a number that makes a difference, and having some program in place would make a significant difference. The other recommendation that we had was to actually lower the campaign spending limit. So right now, it's at $30,000, and our recommendation was to bring that down to $20,000, but still designate the extra $10,000 for travel expenses if a candidate needed them. The reason for this is that, quite honestly, in the last three or four elections, only two, three or four candidates have ever spent more than $20,000. Most people spend considerably less, but having that gulf there makes it quite an issue. And in fact, spending more than $20,000 doesn't guarantee winning a campaign. As we talked about, the average winning campaign, even in Yellowknife, is only about $16,000. It's still quite a bit less than the current 30. But allowing for some difference for travel would make a big difference. And having a travel amount, sort of like the federal government does, might allow for some of the committee's suggestions earlier on travel reimbursements, that sort of thing. But bringing down that total to $20,000 of normal expenses, frankly, just keeps the spending a little bit lower. It's money that, that isn't necessarily effectively being spent. And by even, by keeping it that low, it may open up the elections and make it a bit easier for people to think they can still compete in an election environment. The final two pieces of our submission are to do with electoral reform, but in a broader sense. So one of them was investigating the change in voting, the voting system, from a first-pass-the-post system to a ranked voting system. Some of you have heard me mention this before, but the idea here is that, right now, consensus government means that you have to have MLAs get elected, and then, of course, you elect your premier cabinet speaker. You build that consensus. The voting system we use doesn't have that same consensus marker. So the voting system is simply whoever gets the most votes in a time. If you have eight candidates running, a successful candidate could have hardly any votes by comparison, but they simply have more than the other. In a ranked voting environment, which is used around the world in various countries, it's been studied in BC and Ontario, what happens is you, people, the winner actually ends up with the majority of the vote. So it would be a bit of a significant change for us, but it would actually mean that the candidates elected in writings would actually be a consensus candidate. So it would be the candidate that actually had the majority of support in the writing, and they would actually have the support of more than 50% of the writing. It's a big change, but it's the sort of thing that we think should at least be investigated. We've, it's been brought up before, and generally, the concern is that there's no actual body to look at this. There's no one who's, no committee who's mandated is to consider it. It's not really within anyone's purview. But it's something that might help with voter engagement and might help make sort of NWT model our consensus system better. The second piece to that is recall legislation, which is an idea that BC has enacted. And it basically means that residents of a writing could sign a petition and vote to recall an MLA. The barrier for this sort of thing is normally quite high. You need to have a significant percentage of a writing sign on for this to make it a reality. But the idea behind investigating something like this is, again, it means that the candidate has to have the support of the writing through their whole term, much the same as MLAs have to maintain confidence in the premier and cabinet, or they can sort of recall them from their positions. And this would give the public the same ability with their MLA. So it would simply be taking the model that MLAs already have and extending that to the public. Again, this is something that doesn't totally fit within this committee's review of this election, but it's to do with elections, and there's not really any other body that looks at that. And so that's why that's included today. So I just wanted to present those sort of topics in overview for Open NWT. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Okay, thanks very much for the presentation. It looked like you were speaking from some notes. Is that something you can share with the committee?
There's a copy of the submission with Michael right now.
Okay, great, thanks. Yeah, that's helpful for us. So I guess I'd like to open up the floor to anyone who would like to ask questions of Mr. Wassilsey on his first presentation. Mr. Jacobson, please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, David. Thank you for your submission. Where did you get your costing for your numbers? Because one, like back in the Delta, there's, going to two communities is $20,000 on the charter to do it in a day. So where did you get your numbers of getting to this $10,000 in regards to that? Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Jacobson. Mr. Wassilsey, please go ahead.
Thanks very much for the question, Jackie. The number is just based on actual expenses. So what I've done is, we've taken the history, we've got all the financial reports going back to 2007, and built a database of what it costs to run a campaign, so what all the expenses are from everybody, and put them together. And the highest spending, I'm sure it's not surprising, has generally been in Yellowknife. There's sometimes higher expenses in your writing. For example, in this last election, the highest spending was actually your own, your campaign in an act book because of that travel. And at similar times, various campaigns in spread out writings have been quite high, but it's quite rare. We weren't able to investigate the drivers behind, you know, is it that people haven't spent the money because they don't have it, and it's quite expensive to fly around? But, so we were just looking at what actually gets spent. So in a few cases, but the last time more than two people outside of Yellowknife spent more than $20,000 was 2007.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Wassilsey. Mr. Jacobson, any other questions?
Yeah, thank you. I do, Mr. Chair. No, just in regards to, you know, what we talked about earlier, travel rebates and all these rebates that they're talking about, looking at doing in the cost of different, I guess, north, south, in regards to costing and getting around. Because everywhere it's, for buying a plane ticket, it's like very, costing two over $2,000 per person. And then you're staying, all the costing that you incur for the selection. So I don't know if David has that on his, the system on Open NWT in regards to finding the line items and stuff like that out of the reports. I'm pretty sure you do. But again, I think he should be sharing, he should share that with us, because I worked with, I spoke to him previous, in previous times in regards to what he's trying to do. And I think it's a really good idea what he's doing on breaking down where the line items and what it's costing everybody, and that gives more people who want to put their name forward for elections and stuff like that, just a rough estimate, I guess, and having solid numbers is good, a good thing. But that's just more of a comment. Thank you for your presentation tonight, Mr. Wassilsey. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Mr. Jacobson. Yeah, I can say to you that I don't think there's a lot of consistency in how some of the expense, expenses are actually reported by various candidates. But, Mr. Wassilsey, if you wanted to provide any further comments, please go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Two comments to that, not a comment. One, in previous elections, expenses were actually categorized, so by advertising, events, travel, that sort of thing. In the last few elections, Elections NWT has taken away some of that categorization as they move things to the newer PDF reporting that they've done, which actually makes it a little more difficult, because it's harder to track down which expenses are per travel related or related to anything else. So it might be an idea also for committee to mandate that Elections NWT actually tracks categories of expenses. In the NWT for flights, for example, it's kind of easy because we know the airlines, they can pull that out manually. But it's still a little difficult to pull... they can pull that out manually, but it's still a little difficult to pull that together. The only other comment I'd have is that if, as the rebate increases in money, you probably want to increase the amount of votes that candidates need to be eligible to maintain their sort of reasonableness as, as candidate. You don't want somebody saying, well, I can run, and I only have to get, you know, fifteen votes, and I can get a bunch of money covered. So you want to have that balance between the two. So if you're gonna have a, a higher number, a higher amount of reimbursement, you probably need a slightly higher amount of results, vote sort of counts, to make sure that they've been running a legitimate campaign, and they're, they're trying to get that. So it's just balancing those two things, and looking at how much money the ledge wants to, is able to invest in reimbursement. But certainly, in communities and writings where there's lots of travel involved, lots of expenses, it would make a huge difference. So I, I really hope more can be done that way, and any information we have about it, we try to make sure it's online on Open NWT. So thank you very much, Mr. Jacobson.
Thanks, Mr. Wasselsiu. Any other questions from committee members? Mr. Thompson, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. So just talking about ranked balloting and stuff like that, why would Territory look at, you know, if we have three candidates running, why would they do that compared to, say, eight, like you're talking about? With three running, you're gonna get fifty percent of the vote, most likely, and so that's majority wins, and that, whereas with eight, you're looking at, you know, percentages. I've ran with seven, ran with eight, and I've run with four. So again, you know, I could see maybe ranked balloting good for maybe eight, or seven, or eight, but when we're talking three or four, what would the rationale be for that? Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, or two, in my case, but, uh, Mr. Wasselsiu, please go ahead.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Thompson and Mr. Chair. The rationale behind it, even with a small number of candidates, so say, just you mentioned four, and having been there myself at one point, you can have it easily between four candidates, you can have a vote split of a hundred votes apiece, and then the winner gets a hundred and five votes. So what you look at in that writing is, well, one person got a slate, obviously a majority of votes, but they don't actually have, based on that, the full support, or even the bulk of support of voters in that writing. With a ranked ballot, what would happen would be the lowest person gets dropped, and then their, their second choice votes get allocated to people, and it would keep going until somebody had the majority. So, you know, in, in a vote of seven, it would actually get quite complicated, but I think you, you, Mr. Thompson, are probably the one who has the most people running against them, or you've run in, in your writing, and certainly tracked some of the highest number the last few elections. So it's a great test case for these things. And it's a little difficult to model, because you don't know how exactly people would vote in that kind of environment. But even with a relatively small number of people running, what you're, what you're not doing in the current system is that, it's like one of the complaints about the federal system, is that the winner isn't necessarily the person supported by the most of the candidates, or the most of the voters that split. The ranked voting tries to be backed up on that and ensures that the successful candidate is the one who actually had most of that support. It may be the person who's won, often cases it would be, in some cases, in certain writings, it wouldn't be. But it, it might change it, but you're getting, it's a, it's a consensus model of candidate.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Wasselsiu. Mr. Thompson, anything further?
Oh yeah, I've got a few more questions there. Thank you very much, David, and thank you for the presentation. So I guess my next question, I don't think you have solved me on the balloting, or ranked balloting, so, yes, yet, but recall balloting. So when you talk about that recall, I guess, what is the percentage that you're talking about that would require a recall to kick in, I guess?
Thanks, Mr. Thompson, Mr. Wasselsiu, go ahead.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. The recall legislation in British Columbia is set to, I believe it's forty percent personally, and organizationally, that number could be, say, fifty percent of the writing is probably not a bad measure. The idea is that it's a fairly high number. You don't want it to be, you know, ten or twenty percent of voters say that you're not doing a great job, because then you're getting, frankly, it ends up just being a political tool of, of the day, and, and anything can cause you to have to go to an election, making it sufficiently high that there are the majority of voters in the writing upset with, with performance that can cause that. So I mean, I would say something around fifty percent of eligible voters in, in that writing could do it, but really, it's, in somewhat like the, the rebate discussion, the percentage itself is, can kind of be set anywhere. You wouldn't want to set it to ninety percent, because it's just too high, and you wouldn't want to set it to twenty percent. So fifty percent seems to be a good marker for similar things, and it mirrors the way things work in the ledge.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Wasselsiu, Mr. Thompson.
Uh, thank you, David. So who's gonna cover the cost? When, you know, when you look at that, you know, using Jackie's writing, or Steve's writing, or my writing, we have, and, you know, Minister Chena's writing, you know, that's where we have, and Minister Lafferty, or Emily Lafferty's writing, where you get more than just a block or two or five blocks, or, you know, section of a town or a city, you actually have to go across that there. So where would the cost, where would this cost be covered from?
Thanks, uh, thanks, Mr. Thompson, uh, Mr. Wasselsiu, please go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. The way it would work is to, to get the, the signatures to, to enact a recall, much like a ledge petition. I would presume that we could do something like that online and manage it that way, rather than having to go door to door and have physical signatures. So that the cost of anyone doing that part of it, frankly, is borne by the public. So if, if I say, geez, I'm really upset at my MLA, I'm gonna go around and do this, that's, that's on me, or the organization I'm with, or whoever, to go out and do that and get that support. And that's the only way that can work. I don't think that needs government support or anything else, but that's on residents in the public, and that's something that has to be a citizen-driven effort. Then, if, if they successfully bring about a recall, it would go to an election, which would be the same rules as, as a regular by-election. So there would be some cost to Elections NWT to run that, there'd be cost to candidates, that sort of thing, but it would be like a normal election. I mean, it's important to note that, that while it's passed in B.C. and it's been talked about, it doesn't, it doesn't get used, doesn't get used much at all, ever. It gets talked about sometimes, but it's not something that happens, and there's barriers to it being used all the time, which is a good thing. The idea isn't that this is a, something that should happen every, every term in a writing, or it might not happen for a few elections. It might never, but it does provide the public that same tool. So it doesn't need to be, there don't need, there doesn't need to be a lot of very simple methods for making it happen, but there does need to be ways of, that it can happen when voters are sufficiently upset with their representation.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Wasselsiu, Mr. Thompson.
Good, thanks, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Mr. Nor, I, I've got a few myself, too. Go ahead, Mr. Nor.
Um, forgive me if I butchered the pronunciation last minute, Wasselsiu?
Yep, it's good.
Uh, thank you for your presentation. Just a quick question on the recall. Besides from B.C., is there any other places that you've, that you've researched, if you did like a cross jurisdictional scan, cross other, like other places besides Canada, what else did you look?
Thanks, Mr. Nor, Mr. Wasselsiu, please go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, and thanks for the question, Mr. Nor. It, it's a bit more common in the States, so it's been talked about in Canada, especially in Alberta. It's been sort of on the agenda, but I don't know what's with Alberta. It definitely exists at the state level, quite a bit more so in the, in the United States. I haven't looked too far beyond that. Admittedly, when you, when you consider the options, the, the greatest attraction to it in the North is that it, it's much closer to our actual environment. So recall legislation in a standard political party, southern government system, is it really is kind of an oddity to have that level of, of control or say over what happens in between elections, but it actually kind of fits our government, since it's very similar to the, the model that you picked to select executive council. So that's the, some of the driver behind that is it actually fits our system better than others. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Wasselsiu, Mr. Nor.
I've just, I was just thinking about this a little bit, and, you know, I guess recall legislation, I guess, is another tool to keep us honest, I suppose, and, you know, keep us on our toes. Fifty percent, I think it's a reasonable number. I think you, like you said, you did make a point there, like if it was set too low, like a ten or, ten percent, twenty percent, I think if you, it would be, could be really used frivolously, I think that's kind of dangerous territory, in my opinion. Again, like you said, I agree that you don't want to set it too high either, where you, like if you said like seventy, eighty percent, it'd be probably tough to get a petition. It's tough to get a lot of names on petition anyways, and to, to do something like this is a lot of work. And, but yeah, it would, I could see something like this being very, very expensive, like if it ever did come into play. But I think, I think it's good for the public to know that there's this tool in their back pocket to use if they ever need to use. But that's all I have to say for that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Mr. Wass, or Mr. Nor, Mr. Wasselsiu, anything further on that?
Uh, only that, I very much agree, and that's the, the same sort of logic that, that came about the suggestion.
Okay, thanks. Well, I've got, I guess, a couple of points and questions about recall legislation as well. And, and by the way, the chief electoral officer actually did make a recommendation in her report that the issue of recall legislation should be looked at, so it was in, it was in her report. I guess, from what I could kind of read between the lines with the, the CEO, when she made that recommendation, it appeared to be related to some dissatisfaction with representation, perhaps in the last assembly, with attendance being one matter that was raised, I think, in one of the media stories that she attached to her report. But since then, we've actually brought in a much tougher code of conduct that is binding on, on members, and, uh, so I, I think we, we found a way to address some of the conduct issues that might have been the source of some of the concern, but I guess one of the issues for me is recall legislation, if you have a, a group of disgruntled voters, and, and that has happened in B.C., and I, you know, as I understand it, there have been several attempts to try to remove MLAs there, there, and I think have required paper signatures. There was a whole issue around verification of addresses, and it, it, there's never been a successful attempt. But I think what it can cause is, gives a disgruntled group of voters an opportunity to, dare I say, harass a sitting MLA, or, and put, put that, that individual and, and the, the writing itself under, into like a constant campaign mode, where an MLA feels that they have to constantly defend themselves, their record, rather than actually being able to do work, that, where they, they have to focus, they should be focusing on constituent concerns, work on committees, legislation that's before the House. So I, I think there's, there's a, you know, not, there's a downside to this, even in, in consensus government, if it were to be adopted. So I'm just wondering whether you've given any thought to those kinds of arguments that, that I'm raising now, so I'll leave it to you to respond. Thanks.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. No, certainly I have, and, and in talking with this recommendation before, including it again, that's definitely a concern. I mean, I can almost guarantee that anyone in any of the number of the last number of cabinets or executive council would really love to have had an appointment for four years without any discussion of anything else along the way, too. But that, that's not the way that's set up and designed, and while that's the way elections have been designed lately, I don't think that's necessarily a reason just to keep it the same. The idea, as, as Mr. Nor had mentioned, is having that percentage high enough that it's not just about frivolous action and frivolous annoyance, it has to be something that's, that's a serious number, and something that's seriously happening, you know, not just happening because, oh, so and so didn't give a statement that I liked in the House, or, or something else happened. It's gotta be something that takes thought and time to, to certify and do. So the idea isn't just that it's meant to, for the public to be able to harass their MLA, but at the same time, if the majority of voters in a writing do not support the actions of their MLA, why don't they get a voice? And why don't they have any option of doing anything about that? And right now, they have no recourse, other than they're told to wait for the next election. So, you know, the House, you could have an MLA that was suspended for, for a huge chunk of time, and they'd still be in there, but people in the writing could want to do something, and they have no option of doing anything about that. So it really, there really is no check and balance on that system, other than waiting out for four years. So while you do have a much better code of conduct and other things that are in place, that should make it even more needless for this to ever be used, it's still an important tool in, in the toolbox, and gives the voters that, you know, extra check on the system, check and balance.
Okay, thanks. I'm sure we're gonna have an interesting debate and discussion around this issue, because I think MLAs themselves have quite a toolbox with the, the code of conduct, but I just wanted to go back to maybe a couple of other issues you mentioned. You did raise the issue of there should be some better and clear transparency reporting around contracting by the CEO. That, that's an issue that, where we did ask her for information about the contracts that she had issued during the last election and the process that she went through, so we did collect that information for ourselves, so that's something that I think we were interested in as well, so. Now, you did mention about open data related to elections, election results, I should say. Are there any privacy considerations there, you know, if, I could see where perhaps the kind of information that the CEO's reported in her annual report, there's some very interesting stuff about young voters, older voters, men and women, where the information was gathered. Would there be any privacy considerations around that sort of data being collected and presented, particularly, say, for a smaller community? I just wonder about that, and whether you've, you've thought about that issue. Thanks, go ahead.
Well, thanks, Mr. Chair. Definitely giving it some thought, because it does apply to a lot of government publications, especially around healthcare and other identifying pieces, and especially in elections, when it comes down to identifying voters. However, looking through the report, and most of the information that's already published, very little of it is identifiable in that way, and there really doesn't seem to be anything. You know, when it breaks it out by, by youth and gender, the numbers are still, frankly, the numbers are reported on charts, they're just, the numbers aren't there. Or sometimes they're presented as a percentage, but not the total, or as, and then, so if you already have the percentage, you're not looking at too much, but it does matter if there's only ten voters versus a twenty percent increase. That, that number does make some difference, and having that number is an important part of looking at it. As far as detailed election results, there's certainly no, no privacy implications there. They're all online, or most of them are online, as PDF files, and at Open NWT, we've taken a strong team of monkeys to type in all of those results and have most of them available as open data. And let me tell you, it's a real pain, but it's actually been a huge resource. So we've had students, other researchers and people call and try to get that information, because it's either not available online, or it's frankly really difficult to pull it all together, because it takes a lot of hours to, to put that into sort of open data formats. So we've saved other people a whole lot of hours and made it effective and visible, but there's really no reason that an outside nonprofit is, is taking government information and making it more usable, when it's something so simple as election results. That's the kind of stuff that, that should be pretty accessible. There's standards for the data. Most of the U.S. government, now, there's been some research around standards of publishing. Elections Canada does, has a very simple format they use to publish even on election night. So on, on election night, we ran, we ran a website during the election, NWTelection.ca. So on an election night, we ran we ran a website during the election, NWTelection.ca, and it had contact information for candidates, news stories, and then we collected results. And to get those results, we did a lot of work to get those during the night and auto-read them in from the election system because it wasn't available as open information. So we did all of that to pull it together, but it just that should just be the default. Thank you.
Thanks for those comments. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Wasselsiu on this presentation? Mr. Simpson, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the presentation. I guess a question with with respect to the merit of the recall question. How would it be how would you see it being determined if merit actually existed? If somebody's if a group's going to go out there and put the question to the voter, it's got to have some merit. So they get, you know, you've got a thousand voters, they pick up, you know, sixty percent of the people sign. And do we know, how do we determine that, you know, all sixty percent knew what they were signing, knew what the question was, and determine clarity of the question as well? Like, how do you see all that coming together in recall? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Mr. Simpson. Mr. Wasselsiu, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Simpson, for the question. I think there's a few different pieces to that. So one of them, the question that gets asked as part of the recall petition, frankly, should probably be defined in legislation. So I think all of that should be defined by the assembly as to what that looks like so that there isn't questions about what it means or what it does, or any of those questions aren't going to differ so that it's the same and that public education around it is the same and it's there's requirements of what it is and what it says. The idea that just being anyone can ask an unclear question and sort of get a result and sign this and you'll get a, you know, you get a chance of the door prize and you'll see what happens later with politics, that has to be defined previously. So I don't think that should be open to interpretation or open to guessing by people. As far as intention, I don't think that's anything we can, anyone can really determine, and you can't really figure out what the voter's intention. I mean, we can't figure out voters on election night if they decide they're going to elect somebody because they like their haircut or because they really like what they're saying. And we don't do that. We don't worry about that. It's simply getting the right number. And so with the same thing, I think it's just often take it as its face value that people are signing on to what it is. Again, with the bar being as high as it could be, it's more than just a casual, okay, you leave it in the corner of the coffee shop and you get ten signatures. Certainly a much higher bar than that, so there's some inherent education and concern about that. I imagine it would be a media story, too. I imagine there'd be a fair bit of public conversation about it if it was happening. And so that would drive some of that. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Wasselsiu, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess the NWT, you know, is majority just by some margin indigenous people. I'm just wondering if you haven't looked at the consideration of what the indigenous perception of recall legislation is, or are you just looking at the rest of Canada, which is predominantly non-indigenous? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Mr. Simpson, Mr. Wasselsiu.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And thanks, that's a really interesting question to think about this legislation. I mean, specifically, there hasn't been broader research done with the Northwest Territories' indigenous population and recall. This is mostly looked at parliamentary systems and other tools. However, what I can say, and what does make some sense here, is that the recall legislation, because it mirrors the way consensus government elects its leadership, and the model of leadership in consensus government was designed on the Northwest Territories' sort of indigenous governance, and that's sort of the origin of where the consensus model came from for NWT and Nunavut. And this recall actually mirrors the way MLAs handle cabinet, that it actually probably fits closer to the governance that was designed with that sort of local traditional governance in mind, much more so than just copying every other standard, like the election standards from Westminster's systems of government. So perhaps this is actually moving us to a more to a model that's closer to some of the indigenous governance models that may exist.
Thanks, Mr. Wasselsiu, Mr. Simpson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one more question. With the other jurisdictions that or the other jurisdictions that have recall legislation, we look at we look at southern jurisdictions and I suspect that the electoral districts have quite a few voters, whereas in the territories, like in Hay River South, I think it's something like twelve, thirteen hundred people, maybe eight hundred voted, that was it. And in some of the other communities, it's even smaller than that. Can you give me some idea of, you know, what we're looking at in the territories where we may only have, like I said, fifteen, two thousand voters, maybe a thousand versus a jurisdiction in southern Canada that has recall legislation? What's the difference in the numbers in electoral voters?
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Mr. Simpson, Mr. Wasselsiu.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for the question. And I think that the size of the writings is relative, right? So, I mean, a federal writing is normally something like sixty, sixty thousand voters. And in the provinces, they're all balanced, but to similar degrees based on the size of B.C., Ontario, Alberta being larger, larger provinces with larger writings. And so the number like B.C. uses forty percent, which is a significant number, right? So if you're in a, say it's a fifty thousand person writing, that's over twenty thousand signatures. It's quite a bit. But looking in the Northwest Territories, you know, in your writings, say, of a thousand people, if you need to get five hundred signatures or five hundred and fifty signatures, that's quite a few for anyone to actually put that together. I mean, at least in the writings outside of Yellowknife where turnout is quite high, people are actually engaged enough that I almost think that it's a thing that could happen. Whereas in Yellowknife, we have multiple writings that are, you know, like thirty percent voter turnout. So the barrier there is even higher because you seem to get a fairly low turnout percentage. You know, in the other writings, that turnout's higher. So maybe you get five hundred voters, five hundred votes out of a thousand voters. To make this happen, you would somebody organizing it would still need to get, you know, five hundred signatures because it's reflective of the total voter list, not just the number of people who voted. And again, there's different models for putting that in place, but the idea is that it's a sufficient barrier. It shouldn't just be, well, Tuesday, we're going to recall our MLA today. It should be a difficult thing. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Wasselsiu, Mr. Simpson.
That's all. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thanks. Anything further for Mr. Wasselsiu on his Open NWT presentation? Not seeing any, okay. Would you like to move into your next one? Please go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. All right. Sorry for making you hear from me so much today. Again, thank you very much for even having this and sort of allowing the opportunity to present and talk. You know, there's a number of pieces. This is then these comments are just me personally with a number of concerns in the election and just for your own references, for those MLAs that I'm not familiar with. I've previously run a couple of times and I run Open NWT with the help of some great folks helping with data and systems. And so I just, you know, have a lot of pieces about elections and I wanted to bring that forward. Again, everything I'm going to talk about, your committee clerk there has a copy of and will distribute. The one piece that's not in this submission is some talk about online voting that I want to do, even though I know you've had a few presentations on it. But in general, I mean, the 2019 election was a good election. People voted, there weren't any big issues, a lot of things happened well. There weren't many complaints. There was definitely some public back and forth about some of the issues like online voting, you know, some of the other changes, some of the advanced voting changes, a lot of stuff happened in this election. Online voting is the thing I want to talk about first, and it's not addressed in my submission because I wanted to make a separate one on online voting. But to echo some of the comments you've heard, my background is computer science and I own a company that specializes in information management and data and online systems. And so some credentials are to talk about things online and security. And online voting, one of the concerns in the territory about this new system is, for one, there was no RFP deciding what happened, so there was no standard. There was no acknowledgement of these are the kinds of security standards, these are the kinds of systems we want, and we're going to compare and evaluate systems to figure out what works best for the territory. None of that happened. The online voting was sole source to an organization in Montreal that seems to have run a rather smooth system. But it there certainly could have been a lot more public scrutiny of that process and of what happened. The challenge with modernizing elections in this age, as we move forward, is that online voting seems really neat. It seems like the great solution to all the things that can happen, and it is, but it also creates new problems. So right now, when somebody goes to vote on a piece of paper, they put an X and it goes in a box, and there's a bunch of people watching that box, and eventually they count the X's in the box. But with an online vote, somebody clicks an X on the computer, it goes away somewhere. Election day happens, Elections NWT pulls up a list and says, oh, candidate Smith got a hundred votes, next candidate got fifty. So there's no there's no entire validation of that whole process. And one of the things you get is you either have anonymous voting, like we do in Canada, or you have tracked voting. And that's why banking is so safe, because they know your name is attached to every single transaction, and they know everybody's names are attached to every single transaction. Because there's no name attached to your vote, it's really hard for somebody to go back and verify that and make sure that the right vote was cast. Things can happen on your computer. So it's not even about servers, it's stuff on your computer. Someone can manipulate your computer, it can change things, all kinds of stuff can happen. Those things are all factors, and we never really had that public conversation in the NWT. And that's one of my bigger concerns, is that the only time this really got discussed was right in the run-up to the election when it was announced that this was happening. There was very, very little public conversation before, only the report of the 2015 general election where Elections NWT said they wanted to do this, and then that was about it until a few months before the election. So, you know, I think there needs to be some space for that conversation to happen properly and to figure out what problems we're actually solving with it. So, you know, I'll submit something separately to you guys in writing on that. And I know you've heard from a number of experts on the systems and other pieces, but certainly the rollout of online voting and how it happened is really a concern. And a lot more work needs to be done if that's going to happen again in the future, or if it's going to continue happening in this current way. A lot of stuff should change and be a bit more open about how it's working. But also, we should figure out what problems we're actually solving in the Northwest Territories by this. The real the real driver for it seemed to be that it takes a long time for mail-in ballots to show up. And that's okay, but there's other ways of doing that, and some of those are some of the recommendations I've included to the committee. There's other ways of still working with those ballots. As well, the research in online voting generally shows that rather than better engaging young voters, it actually tends to be an alternative voting method used by older voters who are already voting anyway. And so there's a lot of this, a lot of the benefits were stated, but without some of that that research to back it up, and that's a concern going into the way this election was run and the way online voting is. It's great when the NWT can be the leading jurisdiction in Canada doing anything, but there's some things that are pretty complicated and that perhaps we don't need to be, you know, miles ahead of everybody else in Canada. You know, and there's clearly not a lot of expertise around this sort of thing. You know, Elections NWT isn't staffed with information security people, with technology people at all. Everything they have, from reading their most recent report, was contracted out. All of the IT stuff was contracted out, most of it down south. I think almost almost everything other than their website learning system was done by seven companies. So we're also not using this opportunity to build northern capacity. And, you know, and that's really too bad because it's a wasted opportunity. So I'll leave it with that with online voting. And in general, just talking about the report as it was presented, the report draws a lot of conclusions, and this is just a concern, about voter turnout, about online accessibility, about access to absentee ballots, all those things. And it talks about how all of those things benefited and how they changed and why. But none of that research has been done. So some of that's really fascinating, like knowing why turnout changed this time or knowing why more youth voted. I think that's really important information that the territory needs, and it's good to have that moving forward, but none of the work has been done to do that. So I really urge MLAs to make sure Elections NWT has the funding and the mandate to actually go and do that research. So rather than just try to get a higher voter turnout, throwing darts at the wall and seeing what sticks, close to an election, do some research in between and see what other people are doing. Put some of that work out there to get that done and see why it changed the last time. You know, I think that can make a really big difference, but we have to be really careful about assuming that we understand the reasons why things happened. In the NWT, like we were previously talking about, the writings are each writing is really a different story. So the situation in Hay River is very different than Dunlop, and it's very different than Fram Lake. All of the little things that happen in those writings that drive turnout is a huge change. I mean, in Yellowknife, Fram Lake South had a huge turnout this time, but this is the first time that there hasn't been an incumbent candidate in twelve years. So that there's, you know, some driving things that happened locally because of that, places that didn't have, you know, incumbent running, all kinds of things, and how that impacts elections. So I think that's all really important to look at. But it seems that a lot of conclusions have been drawn before we got to the point of having that done. So when you get my presentation, you'll see there's a number of recommendations. I certainly won't speak to all of them tonight since the time, and we've all been sort of sitting here for too long. One one big concern that I had, though, was in the election report, there was a small recommendation to add restrictions on who's eligible as a candidate. And all the little the little addition was, it was their recommendation nine, and it said, copying from the Local Authorities' Election Act, any of those restrictions.
Sorry, just going to stop you there for a moment, Mr. Wasselsiu. Mr. Simpson did declare conflict of interest when this if this matter did come up, so he's going to leave the room as you've raised it. No, he'll just and he'll just step out while you discuss that matter. So Mr. Simpson's now just leaving the room, and then we'll call him back in at the appropriate time. So please go ahead.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't realize that was the abracadabra word. That particular recommendation is difficult for a number of reasons. The first is that it just copies restrictions from another act. So now, all of a sudden, anybody trying to figure out if they're eligible to run in the Northwest Territories has to both understand the NWT Elections and Floodless Sites Act and the Local Authorities' Election Act. So there's two pieces to it. If the rules in the election Local Authorities' Election Act get changed in a way that shouldn't apply to the territorial election, now the legislation is tied to it. So I certainly think that rather than ever being tied to another act, it should be very specific in what restrictions there are in people who can run. That's a very important piece. Elections are, election law is very complicated, and people in the Northwest Territories who are running don't have teams with lawyers and all kinds of people to interpret things for them. Most people are just doing it on their own with the help of a friend that can be an agent and going from there. So I think that's important to be very specific in the act of what restrictions exist. But beyond that, I also don't think it's fair to restrict people from running for reasons of financial indebtedness to community governments or the territorial government. People have a constitutional right in Canada to vote for pretty much anyone they want to be their representative. The main requirement is that they can appear in the House. They can be sworn in and they can appear at a session. That's why the restrictions on people who are incarcerated exist, because they can't appear in the House, therefore they can't represent the people who are running. When there have been other restrictions on people running in the past, they've actually been thrown out by courts because people have the right to vote for the candidate of their choosing, owing money, and understanding those restrictions at municipal level because municipalities are corporations and simply created by legislation, why those exist. But at a territorial level, frankly, if you run and you get the support of the people in your riding, you should be fully allowed to run and figure that out. If you owe money to the municipality, to the territory, that's probably an election issue, and maybe that means people won't support you, but that's up to the voters. That shouldn't be up to the Elections Act, and certainly not in a That shouldn't be up to the Elections Act, and certainly not in a sort of a backhanded way that this is in there, not including any detail. So I just, I wanted to address that one specifically, because restrictions on candidacies were brought up in the last term for very different reasons, but it's a very similar issue, and it was sort of, it was not highlighted very much in the report, it just passed along in the middle, so I wanted to raise that.
Can I just ask, Mr. Wassoussi, are you finished discussing the recommendation nine? Okay, then we will invite Mr. Simpson to come back into the room, and then we'll continue. So we'll just wait for him to come back. Okay, you can go ahead again, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, sort of moving down some of the list of pieces, one of the other concerns is the recommendation 27, and this is the one, actually, that you'd mentioned, Mr. Chair, in talking about recall legislation. That recommendation is really difficult for me to see that in that report and to pull that out, because it does seem as if Elections NWT is moving beyond the core mandate of running an election and making sure that the system works and the system is impartial, and sort of moving into the politics of it, and that's quite concerning. And I think we have to draw that line between the scope and mandate of what Elections NWT does. Certainly, they receive complaints about, you know, the electoral system, everybody, people talk at the coffee shop, people do all kinds of things. But Elections NWT, it'd be nice to see a committee in the House draw that line to say, no, the mandate is very clear in that it's simply meant to run elections and stay out of the politics of it. Seeing Elections NWT comment on recall or, you know, direct electing people or different systems of government parties or non, that's really something that should be outside of their, the Elections NWT bubble, because that's, once Elections NWT gets into the politics of things, then it can certainly hurt the public perspective of them as an impartial agency that's just there to make sure that the election is being run and votes are being counted and everything is happening fairly. So I think maybe perhaps clarifying the mandate of the agency would be of some help. Further to that, there was a recommendation to remove any mention of multi-district polls in the election, because they weren't used this time. And I certainly understand that, of them not being used, but I would be concerned or remiss not to mention to committee that perhaps in a future election, things can change. So if you already have things in the legislation that are tools for future CEOs to use in elections to get more votes and to help voter turnout, you probably shouldn't just delete them right away. Give them some time, and perhaps they'll be used in a future election, but there's not necessarily, you've gone to the effort of drafting these things. They're not, not a terrible idea, they're great for mine sites, anywhere remote. Online voting was talked about in the report, replacing that, but there's places that might not be accessible. So if we end up with, you know, a new mine open that doesn't have proper internet access for people to vote remotely that way, a multi-district poll might be the best way to make that happen. So since you already have that designed into the legislation, my recommendation is to leave that in. Further to the comments on online voting, the Act right now allows for online voting and allows for regulations to be made. There don't seem to be any regulations around online voting, there doesn't seem to be anything specific about it. And perhaps some of the recommendations in the report spoke about creating a class of votes for online voting, very similar to everything else that's been done. And perhaps actually the Assembly should go further and specify security standards, specify the process to be used, and make sure those things are actually mapped out in legislation. I would have thought the amendments committee made in the last government about allowing online voting regulations would cause that, but there didn't seem to be any regulations or anything else created. So perhaps MLAs should be more specific in exactly what they're hoping to see as far as rules and restrictions around that sort of thing. One big improvement to the voting system that BC enacted in the last election was they actually let voters vote at any polling station in the Territory. So, and these are the ways you can improve voting and improve the opportunities of people to vote without necessarily using online voting. Being able to vote anywhere in the Territory means that if you live in Hay River normally, but you're in Tuck for work the day of the election, you can vote. You don't have to have registered two weeks in advance to do it online, you don't have to make sure you popped into the Returning Office, you can still go into the polling station and vote. So anyway, it's done in BC, it started in the last election, but it was just a way of making sure people have every opportunity to vote, and I think that's something we could easily do in the Territory. It certainly adds a bit of complication to counting, but no different than some of the other remote polls and would give people that extra opportunity. Another piece that gets kind of mentioned in the report was talking about enumeration. It's been brought up after every single election since Elections NWT stopped doing enumerations, saying that it's probably not a bad idea to fix the lists. The response is always that no one else in Canada does it. Mel Umbert did it in 2018 before their last election, because their lists needed that extra check. It's easy to get new information for lists from data systems, and as a data person, you see that. But the idea of allocating a bit of money, an effort to go around and have an enumeration done properly, to make sure those voter lists are accurate. If we're talking about turnout and all this expense about voting, we should probably also know who's actually going to be there. It shouldn't just be up to candidates to figure out which people actually left, or the very unfortunate situation where if somebody passed away or something else. So that's something that could easily be done before the next election, and it's been talked about many, many times, and simply doesn't happen. I also wanted to address the privacy of information. So candidates collect more and more information, Elections NWT is proposing to collect email addresses, a lot more information about residents. There's not a lot of public information that happens about this. People don't realize what's on the voter's list, like their name, address, any of that stuff, people don't always know that it's there, never mind their email address. So I think some public education around what information candidates and campaigns get, but also really strict rules and education for candidates to understand what to do with that personal information. People are getting a lot of information about a lot of people who live in their communities, and making sure the candidates know very strictly what privacy legislation applies to them and how that information has to be handled, I think is really important. You know, there's nothing super secret on those lists, but at the same time, you don't want any of that information being misused or mishandled, especially as more information is being added to the list. One thing that happened in this election that I know was talked about by a number of voters was if you voted early in the office of the Returning Officer, you had a blank ballot. You had to write in the name. Every other election, you get the same ballot as you get on Election Day, you know, with a picture of the candidate and the name, and you can vote, and it looks the exact same. They were the same ballots that were used. This time around, none of that happened. So because advanced voting started the day after nominations closed, they weren't able to put ballots out in communities for Returning Officers to have, which means that anybody voting early was at a disadvantage to somebody voting on the day of. Because the reason the pictures are on the ballot and the ballots are set up that way is, I mean, there's literacy issues, there's all kinds of things, and having those same ballots makes a big difference. But instead of actually looking at that, everyone was just given a blank ballot. So that was different and new, but, you know, I heard a number of complaints about it, just in talking to voters and running a number of election events here, and that's something that can easily be fixed and mandated, and simply that all voting has to take place using the same ballot. So voting in the Returning Officer should just use the same ballot as Election Day voting. If that means it gets delayed a couple of days, that's okay. Which brings me to the sort of, one of the final broad pieces, is that this election saw a massive increase in voting opportunities. So advanced voting started the day, so candidates, the last time to withdraw was 5:00 PM. Voting started at 6:00 PM, if you wanted to vote online. If you wanted to vote in the office of the Returning Officer, it started Saturday morning, 9:00 AM or whenever the office is opened. That's a huge increase in opportunity, but also it really changed the dynamics of campaigns. So for candidates that aren't incumbents, that can really, that creates huge challenges for them, because an incumbent candidate can go out and make sure all those votes are getting in at the very beginning of the campaign before it happens. So what we're really doing is causing the campaigns to have to start even earlier. So maybe the campaign starts in September, but if, you know, candidates are white, they're getting out even earlier, because now people can start voting right away, which kind of negates so much of the election process. And at the same time, we've introduced tools like online voting, which means you can vote from anywhere. So if you can vote from anywhere, some of the opportunities for advanced voting aren't necessarily needed, because now on Election Day, you could vote from anywhere. So there's a number of cross-connecting pieces that have happened, and the idea is simply that it's a month of an election. And again, this is one of those things that I think just needs study. I certainly am not a fan of some of the extended opportunity to vote, because I think it negates the campaigns. You've got candidates who haven't even been to a debate or a community event or anything. I mean, half your riding, if you're new, you probably haven't even met most of the riding. If you're, even if you're not new, if you're an incumbent, you probably haven't met anybody new in the riding at that point. So there's lots of those concerns, but the actual look about how the campaign works, there hasn't really been any examination of that. So that the impact of advanced voting, of all those different opportunities and the way that changes the election is something that was just done, but there really wasn't any discussion about it. And I don't think, I don't know if this committee is quite the place to look at that either, but there hasn't been any of that examination of, okay, well, we can expand it, are we doing the right thing? And is this, does this really model what we want, you know, in the Northwest Territories for elections? Like, are we doing it for the right reasons? And so that's something I think just needs some public conversation, and, you know, maybe this isn't the, some of that conversation can be spread out over this term before the election. I guess those decisions were all left to Elections NWT, they picked however many days they wanted to use, and they can do that again, but it'd be nice to see some guidance and some, some looking into that from committee and just from the Assembly in general, to make sure that that's backed by something. Because like we were talking about with some of the other pieces, when we're just doing things ourselves, in the Northwest Territories, it'd be nice to actually have some of that research done and take a look in communities and see what the impact is and how we can make it better. Maybe just doing it isn't the best way, maybe there's other ways we can improve turnout in communities. You know, and a touch to that is simply on Election Day, there needs to be some more advertising. This is maybe more of a Yellowknife issue, so apologies to all of, everyone on the committee that's not from Yellowknife, but sometimes in Yellowknife, it's, you can drive right by a voting station and not even know that it's a voting station. I actually went around and looked at all of them, because I was curious on Election Day, and only one of them had signs visible from the street. You couldn't even tell most of the were. So I know people who drove right by their local poll station and had no idea it was Election Day. So my recommendation is simply that Elections NWT do some Election Day advertising. Put some signs up, put some signs outside of the schools. I mean, in some cases, it's just a little picture in the window, but, you know, candidates buy a million and a half signs, it wouldn't hurt for the government to make sure that there's a couple of signs pointing out the location. So, you know, that's one that's really important, because it's, you know, I mean, voter turnout went up, but it can go up a lot more than it has, there's still a long way to go, and making sure people know where to vote and can get to the place they're voting is a pretty simple priority on that side, on that scale of things. So I can leave it at that, as it's late, that was a whole bunch of things, but I can take any questions, certainly.
Okay, thanks very much for your thoughts there. Any questions for or from the committee members on Mr. Wassoussi's second presentation? No? Yeah, you covered a lot of ground there. I guess I just wanted to make a couple of comments. The chief electoral officer, in her presentation to us, she did say that there was, and I'm not going to get the terminology right here, a security review done on the software by the chief information officer for GNWT and the Department of Finance for the system that was used. And of course, we heard a lot of discussion about that issue from the two experts that we had appear before us on electronic voting. Yeah, I think I really had a lot more here, but, no, I want to thank you, nothing further from committee, so I want to thank you for your time this evening. David, you obviously put a lot of thought into your points, the clerk has confirmed receipt of your some written submissions. If you have further thoughts on e-voting, I think you mentioned that you might like to submit those. I would remind you that Friday, September 25th is our deadline. We have to report into, no, we don't actually have a deadline for reporting through the Assembly, but we would like to start to wrap up our work, but, so we are accepting further written submissions until Friday, September 25th at 5:00 PM. But I want to thank you again very much for your time this evening with both presentations. You've given us some good things to think about, so thanks again.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody. Really appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. So I don't believe there's any other members of the public that wanted to make a submission this evening, so this concludes this portion of our meeting. As I said, I'd like to remind those watching that we are accepting written submissions until Friday, September 25th at 5:00 PM. So that ends the public portion of our meeting. I will need a motion to move in camera, please. Mr. Simpson, no objections. Okay, we are going to move in camera, so that ends the public portion of our meeting. I want to thank everyone for watching this evening. We had a pretty active day here ourselves, so, but thanks, everyone, for watching and